I never. Wouldn't even do that. Get the old smack back?
I'll light up and do it. I just had to tell my two daughters that they'll take care of everything like that.
Well, I'm not worried.
Hope nobody's committing a crime in Benton County right now.
What was that?
Hope nobody's committing a crime in Benton County right now.
Oh, yeah.
If they do, it better be right outside the door.
Excuse me, I'm gonna go rob one of them. That's right, Tim. He should get a picture of that.
Are you guys good there, Monty?
Yeah.
We'll call to order the Benton County Board meeting for August twentieth. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiances.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, bath roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Schlongen.
Here.
Commissioner Heinand.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Approve the agenda. Monty, do you got any ads?
I miss chair. I'd like to move item consent items number five and number six to the county administrator items at nine thirty-five as the second and third items under county administrator at nine thirty-five. So that's consent items five and six. They they need some explanation.
Okay.
Also, Steve would like to add the follow-up on the fiber install change order. If we could please add that one right after Sheriff Heck's nine oh five item again, right after the nine oh five item, please. And that is it.
Move for approval of consent agenda excluding items five and six and adding the change order.
Second. Oh, we got we got a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. County Board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county boards observes Robert's Rules of Orders for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, the public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones and turn or turn them vibrate. Thank you. Any open forum? No? All right, we'll move on to consent agenda items one through four and seven through eleven. Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Sheriff Heck. It's good to see everybody today.
Commissioners. We are here today to celebrate a life saved. The reason we celebrate these instances is because they are rare and they are remarkable. Statistics will tell you that nationwide, fewer than ten percent of people who experience cardiac arrest are able to recover from that incident, much less recover to the extent that Mr. Ott has to to be with us here today. On May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Benton County first responders saved the life of Gilman resident Bradley Ott. At about five thirty PM, Bradley's wife, Joanne, called nine one one because Bradley was having difficulty breathing. As first responders were on their way to their home, Bradley stopped breathing. Joanne's nine one one call was transferred to Mayo ambulance for CPR instructions. Mayo ambulance dispatcher Joel Newberg provided CPR instructions to Joanne, and she began performing CPR on Brad. Through the incredibly emotional and stressful moments while awaiting first responders, Joanne did an incredible job of giving Brad what he needed most, prompt high-quality CPR. While this was going on, public safety dispatchers Lindsey Galvin and Katie Dusin worked to get first responders to the residents, monitor the progress of the CPR being done on Brad, and coordinate the response. Shortly after her nine one one call was placed, the team of first responders began arriving. Arriving first on the scene were Minnesota State Patrol Trooper Brian Mosher and Deputy David Bonfield. Trooper Mosher and Deputy Bonfield worked to attach an AED to Bradley while continuing to perform CPR. Arriving shortly thereafter, Foley Police Officers Bart Kaufman and Cody Pausch assisted in performing CPR with AED work while the AED worked to bring Bradley's heart back into rhythm. While these officers were working, members of the Foley Fire Department arrived on scene. They attached a Lucas device to Bradley's chest to take over the work of chest compressions. Shortly after activating the Lucas device, Bradley began to regain consciousness. CPR was discontinued, and first responders worked to support the signs of life that had returned to Bradley. Miraculously, Bradley regained consciousness to the point of being able to speak to first responders and the Mayo ambulance crew who had arrived on the scene. Bradley was transported to the hospital where he received further care before being released. Thanks to the early CPR provided by Joanne and the coordinated efforts of the team of first responders on this call, Bradley's life was saved. Today, we honor the efforts of this team and express our gratitude for a life saved. I have several certificates and some life-saving bars for those involved. And I think I would like to start with the Citizens Life Saving Award for Joanne. So, Joanne, if you would come up, please. Without without what you did and without your brave efforts, this might have been a different outcome. So, thank you very much for what you did. Congratulations. Next, we have Ashley DeMars from Mayo. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Sam Willey from Mayo. Thank you. Trooper Ryan Mosher. Thank you for being there and assisting us. Lindsey Galvin. Thank you. Dispatcher Katie Dusin. I'm sorry, lead dispatcher Katie Dusin. Thank you. Deputy David Bonfield. Police Officer Cody Pausch. Police Officer Bart Kaufman. From the Foley Fire Department, Tyler Palm. Rick Herbrand. Todd Foreman. Jason Stadanski. Travis Johnson. Mark Papenfuss. And unable to attend today was Jared Fleck. So, thank you to everybody. Round of applause for them.
Monty, how do we want to do? Do we want to do a picture?
Pictures?
It's speechless seeing how many people responded. It is a very proud moment, I think, of this whole board to see this.
If we could, get a picture.
So, we're gonna have the tallest stand up.
It's quite a crew.
Yeah, awesome job.
Hopefully, we can get them all in there.
I mean, this this just goes to show from start to finish what you need to have. Morning. He didn't hear you.
Yeah, he's hard of hearing, too. We can try to stand.
Them are the ones that need the picture.
Okay, let's see. Commissioner, are you getting that commissioners are in the back. I can't see you.
I think I think they're fine right here.
That's fine.
Commissioner, sit down, please.
Yeah, there we go. Thanks, Tim.
Will you take control of that situation?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
It's truly amazing from civilian to dispatch to troopers to all the different first responders. Hey, Jeremiah, are you? Tim, should we work to get you names on the pictures, too? Perfect.
I've got homework.
I might need that, too, Troy.
What a great feeling. Thank you, guys. All right, I think we'll go with Steve next. Hey, Kurt, how are you?
Mr. Chair, if I could, maybe we've got two items.
Oh, sounds good.
He wanted to move them.
He wanted to move those to underneath.
You're right. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thanks.
Trying to run the show again. Relax.
To clear it out here.
Yeah.
Thanks for considering.
Probably because you're talking now, huh?
And I'm okay with that. Uh, thanks for considering the late agenda ad. It was the only time all three of us could be here to revisit and bring some additional information regarding the second change order for the building fiber project regarding the construction of the Public Works Building. We've got Kurt Holheisel. He's from Systematic Technologies. Uh, he's there, the lead vendor we work with, and then Wayne Starry here from Starry Electric, who did was subbed out by Kurt to do the plowing and construction of the of the fiber and the conduit. Um, I recall one of the questions that from our last discussion was somewhat how this process unfolded. Um, and I'd just like to address that and maybe a couple other quick notes here that'll hopefully fill in some of the blanks and allow time for Kurt and or Wayne to an opportunity if needed to fill in the rest. The the cost and the reasoning for the change order were communicated by the contractors. Uh, we we discussed it and was presented with the situation at hand and the potential alternatives. Uh, it was decided that we continue with the project to avoid further costs and delays to complete. Uh, the boring company was on site. As I had said before, the soil conditions north, they were trenched all the way up to the corner of the, I believe, the tennis courts there, and maybe Wayne could fill in a little bit of detail there. And they ran into extremely unusual soil conditions, solid clay. I did communicate with the vendors at the board or that the change orders would have to be approved for payment by the board. And as that we finished the project to bring the the any change orders forward at that time because it was kind of unknown going forward as well. There were there was there was also a couple other additional issues that even past that boulevard that they ran into. And I can let Wayne kind of explain what unfolded there as well. Um, it sounded like they were he worked with another contractor and absorbed some of those costs to get that done with the conditions there, and they ran into some really wet swampy area in front of the where it cuts over just south of the Public Works Building. So, I guess I can take any questions or I can let Wayne kind of fill in how that any gaps there and then can you explain a little bit more detail?
Board, do you got any questions? Or do you want to let Wayne?
Just let him explain.
Yeah, let him explain. Yeah.
So, the project, the way we bid it was to use a standard machine to plow that depth with that size conduit. So, it's a seven fifty track machine from here. That track machine allows us to travel over top of finished areas, grassy areas, boulevards without too much damage and still be able to get the job done. That's the most reasonable way to do it. Directional boring, larger machines are additional cost. So, when we bid the project, we bid it for the machine that we own that is supposed to do that work. Um, we were able to trench some of it already, so we knew that there was capable to do it. Um, we got into that area by the tennis courts right there, and it got really hard. So, a couple options. We can hook another machine on the front and pull on it to get that through there. That didn't work. We actually tore the blade right off the back of the machine. So, over and above standard soil conditions, part of what we had bid. So, uh, two options. We could get a bigger track machine in there that has steel growers that's gonna tear it all up. We decided that that is not a good option to tear up that whole boulevard and do major restoration there. Um, the guy I talked to, Anderson Underground, said that he's gonna have a hard time fitting through there. Uh, so we decided that directional boring was the next best option to keep the project moving. My boring guy was on site. So, basically, long and short is we didn't have it figured in our bid to to go, you know, over and above what we owned the machine sitting there. So, um, not that it, you know, and Anderson seemed how he was there for that. I had him plow the rest of it out of town. Biggest reason is I didn't want to run into another. Once he moved out of there, I didn't want to have him move back in for another section we couldn't do. And then knowing that from the blacked up over to maintenance building was wet. You know, we had a wet spring, so I just had him take that through the rest of the way. I took care of those costs, but I would just would like to get the costs covered for that section that we couldn't take care of with the machine that we had figured in the bid.
How many feet did you have to bore, would you say?
That section was like fifteen hundred feet.
Okay.
Additional. So, I had I had downright boring doing other boring up there for road crossings and stuff like that, but it was fifteen hundred feet there.
Okay.
So, typical cost of boring is gonna run you about ten to twelve bucks a foot in there. So, but I had trenching costs incurred, so I'm just trying to make up for what some of the costs that that I had to pay Dave for that, so.
Was it just compacted clay or?
Just hard material in there. Yeah, just, um, it's an odd corner right there and and it was hard, so. Grass doesn't hardly grow there. We we got comments from the school district that said that grass doesn't grow there well and stuff. It's just a, you know, and we didn't, Dave really can't tell what the directional boring, you know, he said bored well, so that means it's probably hard. And then the rest of the project, I can't answer, you know, but that corner was tough.
Did you go up the east side of Norman or the?
East, yeah, from the tennis court straight up.
See, and that years ago was all dug up when they put the sewer line in there up to the school.
Yeah, and I don't know why, you know, we were away from the existing fiber, you know, considerably, but so I there's no explanation to other than just the soil conditions in Benton County can vary quite a bit.
Absolutely.
As you move, you know, from point to point, so.
From my standpoint in doing this, I I think that's, uh, very reasonable. Um, there are also three Benton County businesses that pooled together to get this done between Anderson, Starry, and Systemat or yeah, Systematic, so. I agree. I'm gonna move for approval to pay it.
I'll second that, then.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Mr. Chair, thanks for the.
I was just gonna mention that, you know, we've had change orders before from the highway department on when they met, you know, unseen obligations, too, so.
Mr. Chair, you know, I pulled this just to get clarification, okay? You know, as you bid a project, I bid projects, too, you know, and you're right, there is unknowns. It was just the process of how it was done. That was my problem with it, okay?
Understood. Yep.
That's all.
Mr. Chair, too, on on tagging that to Commissioner Heinand's comments, I think it's just a matter of making sure we're doing what we should be doing at the public's dollars, so.
Absolutely.
That's all. It was nothing, you know, so that was the biggest question. Thank you, though.
Kurt, do you want to say anything?
No, I think it's made covered pretty good.
Good. Well, I appreciate you guys coming in and explaining it and waiting on the the money and everything, so. Uh, we got a we got a motion and a second to approve paying five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars to Systematic. I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And all abstained. Opposed and one abstention. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
For coming in.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good day.
Yep. Now, if you don't mind, we'll move on to five and six.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, no, no.
It's left later again.
That's good.
I was fine delaying those until they. Oh, okay, my bad. I had it right after.
Did the same thing?
I'll help you guys.
Roxanne, sorry.
If you'd like, I can pull up the map on the screen or are you comfortable with what you have in your packet?
I'm comfortable.
I'm fine.
Okay, so before you, we have a request for an amendment to ordinance three eighty-five and three fifty-one. Those ordinances are what establish the planned unit development, which is known as Oak Hill Estates. Oak Hill Estates, in your packet, you'll see everything that's in blue is part of the planned unit development. It's essentially a zoning district. There's a few lots in pink. Those are R-three, straight R-three zoning. Um, and just to kind of give some background on that, when this project first came forward, it was the standard zoning district. It was meeting the criteria of the R-three zoning district. Their next phase, they started to go with smaller lots and considering a community septic. And during that time, it was discussed and decided upon that they needed to go forward with a PUD so that they could have smaller lots, lesser setbacks, and a little bit more flexibility with that. And so that's why you see those two different zoning districts within the Oak Hill Estates. So, the request before you is to amend that planned unit development to reduce the setbacks for accessory structures, sheds. With these smaller lots, it's harder to fit accessory structures on there, and we've seen a number of variance requests come forward for that lesser setback so that they aren't bad, like right up against the houses, so that they can put them more along the side and rear property lines. And so the request before you is to reduce that setback um, to, excuse me while I'm looking at this. It's five feet for lots that are abutting, uh, open spaces or outlots and ten feet for lots that are abutting other residential lots. And so we have a pretty good idea of even where the future lots would be. And you can see on the drawing that I provided for you, Exhibit B, Sheet One. Um, the areas in yellow would be that five-foot setback, and the the areas highlighted in green would be that ten-foot rear setback. And then you can see that there is a future planning for the rest of the PUD. If it stays like that, we we don't know at this point. That was just a sketch that was provided and planned for back in the early two thousands, and it could change. Um, as you all know, we we haven't seen any plans to move forward with that development at this time. But this request comes to you from the HOA to to assist their residents in creating in having sheds and and different things on their property that would otherwise require variance.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. So, Roxanne, I I know it's just all line for future development. And if this is going forward, will these rear setbacks follow the new plan, too, or not?
They would need to be adopted into that new ordinance because right now it's specifically described as just the lots that are there. That's what that PUD ordinance describes is those lots.
Mr. Chair, um, so Roxanne, on that whole Oak Hill, you know, Estates development, has there been any conversation for them to to get some kind of a road that they could get out to seventy-eight? You know, that Highway Ten corridor is really a dangerous place, and if they keep putting more and more houses in there.
I think it's essentially full right now. I don't know if there's any lots.
Development is can.
Yeah, and there there's been no conversation of with the, uh, property owners on any expansion at this time.
Okay.
So, until we have that, it hasn't been discussed. It hasn't been brought up, no.
Okay. I think I think what we'll do is is the applicant here?
Yes.
Anybody that would like to speak on this? Hello, Steve, if you could state your name and.
I'm Steve Posh. I'm on the board for the Homeowners Association. Uh, my address is eighty-six thirty Oak Hill Road Northeast in Rice. Question that was raised about future development, I think the developer is waiting until we do have a second outlet out of that development before they add any more lots to that. And most of the lots have been built. There's one being built right now, and I think that there's only one or two lots that have not been developed out of this this phase right here.
Okay.
But one of the concerns we are running into is with thirty-foot setback is in these smaller lots is it's so close to their house or close to the neighbors' backyards where they're looking right at the right at the shed, and it'd be more desirable to have it pushed back. And you can see there's a number of lots that don't have anything behind them, and and the thirty-foot thirty-foot setback just did not make any sense.
Okay. All right, thanks. What we'll do is we'll we'll do the public hearing and then we'll have a discussion. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, at this time, I think we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak on this either online or um, in the audience? Okay, I'll do a second call. Is there anybody online or in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Final call, online or any audience to speak on this matter? If not, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, are there any emails or letters to read in to the record?
No.
Okay. Uh, has any department received any comments, concerns, uh, state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda item?
No.
Okay. Uh, any action by the township? Anything needed there?
No.
Okay. County Board, questions? Commissioner Schlongen.
The five-foot rear setback, is that from the original building or is that from the property?
Property line.
So, that's that's pretty close to somebody else's property. You want to get that close to somebody else's property? Are there are is there any zoning thing that says how far you should be away from the property?
That's that's what we're, yeah.
That's what we're changing potentially.
Yes, for the planned unit development, it allows flexibility. So, with this, there's reduced setbacks for all of the dwellings. If you look at the ordinance, uh, for example, some of the houses are as close as five feet to the side property line where we would generally require ten or fifteen feet. But the purpose of the planned unit development is to allow that flexibility and more of a compact development.
And, Mr. Chair, in this case, HOA is requesting.
They they want this.
So, all the homeowners are requesting this.
Mr. Chair, just a comment Roxanne touched on a little bit, but if we're gonna constantly get variance requests to be changing stuff here, it takes the onus off of these homeowners because that's an expensive process.
Mm-hmm. Yep. What are the wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second. Second it. Okay, we got a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance change. Any other communication or questions on this from the board? See and none, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
You.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Thanks, Roxanne. Okay, now we're gonna move on to Christine.
I have Brian here with me, um, so before you have the ratification statement for the Avenue Tax and Kama to continue use of Tax and Kama through twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and I guess I can touch on that a little bit, so um, you know, I know we discussed yesterday as well, so there was a two-year extension with the Avenue contractor extension that went through December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, with us trying to get on the um conversion schedule with Tyler as early as possible. We were, you know, we got into the twenty-four schedule, we weren't sure if we were gonna be, you know, converted fully by twenty-four, if it was gonna run into twenty-five. So last year when we brought this forth, uh we just asked for twenty-four to be ratified and not twenty-five, just in case we were live, you know, by November, December of this year. It does look like um it's going to be as as late as quarter two of twenty-five right now, is what Christine talked with Tyler yesterday. So um again, a lot of the counties just ratified both years, we were just hoping that maybe we could save that uh if we did go live in 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 November, December of this year.
Mister Chair, Brian, just for clarification again, so I understand we're gonna go through twenty-five, but you may come on with the new system in the second quarter?
So we're already starting the conversions, we're, we're, we're in essence paying for both systems.
Right, and that was kinda planned. You were gonna write for the whole year.
As soon as we go, as soon as we go live, we wanna have, we wanna have, you know, the the avenues, you know, support in case we need something that, you know, going forward. But once we switch over to Tyler, we'll be going into Tyler and using Tyler going forward. They're still gonna be pulling data out of Avenue for TNT notices or whatever they need to. But uh, yeah, well, once we switch over to Tyler, we'll be moving that forward.
But you will run them parallel through twenty-five?
For, we'll have, we'll have both systems, yes, paid for through twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
And 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 I will kinda note that um there were many counties that were already signed on with Tyler that absolutely did not want to do anything during an election year. So when we went to Tyler and signed on that agreement with Tyler, we did ask them, you know, we're willing to go as quickly as possible because we knew that the costs were gonna be greater the longer we waited. So they did stick us in the middle of the pack, which now, yes, we've been pushed back a little bit, but the ones that are below us, sounds like they may go into twenty-six or maybe even twenty-seven already.
Wow.
So the cost of those counties may be, well, yeah, a lot greater. And last year for twenty-four, we kinda did the worst-case scenario budgeting about a hundred thousand for Kama and tax. They ended up being about sixty-five thousand is what we spent. And then this year, we have a really good understanding because the colonies have already ratified, so what we're bringing forth is, should be what the cost is. So it it ends up being maybe a hundred and twenty-five thousand for two years, and we budgeted a hundred, so we're, we are over, but you know, last year it could have been a hundred if less counties ratified, so.
Okay.
Move for approval, Mister Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any other uh questions? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more item for you, um, the election recount joint powers agreement with the state, similar to the one we did a few weeks ago. This is just for the general election, so just looking for a motion to ratify the joint powers agreement.
So moved, second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to ratify the joint powers agreement. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Christine. Who didn't need legal?
Okay, now. You can go to Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner uh Heinen, now I guess we can go to you, Chris.
We got the grand poobah's blessing there.
I got Junior and Poobah.
Just making sure you stay on track, sir.
Okay.
All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, as you recall, we had a recent uh committee of the whole where we discussed uh the five-year road construction plan for the years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine. And here is that uh draft before you on the screen. In its current form, here's some facts that I pulled out of it, uh that you maybe didn't know. This plan represents an investment of over fifty million dollars over the next five years. Uh, it includes nearly eighty-two and a half miles of road that will be improved or rehabilitated. It also includes the replacement of five bridges. Um, to fund that fifty-million-dollar investment, it includes twelve million dollars of outside money in the form of uh grants, mostly federal grants, but there's some state bridge bonding dollars in there as well. It includes spending sixteen point seven million dollars of our sales tax for transportation and about twenty-one million dollars of our state aid allotment. So um, I think it's fair to say this is probably the largest investment Benton County has made over a five-year period um in its history. So, all with nineteen eighty staffing levels, I might add.
You had to throw that in there, didn't you?
Wow.
Um, so I don't know if we wanna go through it, just maybe hit some highlights. Uh, the next couple of years, as shown on the screen here, are big years for us. Uh, uh twenty-five uh includes over twelve million dollars of construction spending. And once again, this, this shows construction plan uh projects that are let and assumed that they're constructed over that calendar year. And we all know, in reality, especially reconstruction projects, they take uh two years sometimes. Um, and this is where where the budgeting discussion we'll get into tomorrow um comes into play. For example, like, in the previous version, Cassaw seven was shown in the twenty twenty-four construction project. And while we did let it in open bids and award a construction project, a lot of those costs will hit the twenty twenty-five budget, even though it's shown as a twenty twenty-four uh construction project on the five-year CIP. So just take that um kinda with a grain of salt if you see this. So this makes that assumption that the projects are let and constructed all in one year, and that's how we get to that, that total of twelve point six million dollars in twenty twenty-five. And moving on to like sixteen point three million dollars in twenty twenty-six. Um, in the next two years alone, though, we'll be replacing uh five, those five bridges. So when I mentioned those five bridges, the next five years, that is scheduled to occur uh in the next two years. Um, big projects, uh we're still working on a schedule to construct the roundabout at one and twenty-nine in twenty twenty-five, and that's shown there. Another big reconstruction project is within Gilman, three and five uh within Gilman. Still trying to coordinate meeting with their designer, but it sounds like some things are promising for funding. So we still need to work out all that they're gonna do as part of our road construction project. Um, and then the bridge, twenty-two bridge over the Rum River. Uh, and then County Road fifty-one bridge over the Saint Francis just southeast of town are scheduled to be uh replaced next year. Uh, and some big projects in twenty twenty-six, uh the reclaim project on Cassaw three from Sock Rapids out to Popple Creek. Replacing Cassaw twelve bridge over Little Rock Creek just east of Rice, thirteen bridge over the Elk River. Um, and then our big earmark project, uh Cassaw twenty-nine extension from Cassaw one around to Cassaw three. So we're still working on a design schedule, assuming that we'll be constructing that in twenty twenty-six. And then replacing a small bridge on gravel County Road uh forty, we received some state bridge bonding uh for that. And then mixed in amongst those are some pavement preservation projects, like some reclaims and some mill and overlays. Um, and then currently reconstruction, or reconditioning of County Road fifty-seven from three to twenty-nine. So that's a, a one and a half mile stretch that kinda goes through, well, it looks like a neighborhood. So we call it a reconditioning because we think it's gonna be more than a reclaim, but we don't have the right-of-way width and don't anticipate purchasing right-of-way to reconstruct that to uh building wide shoulders and things like that. Uh, later years, um I will just point out uh the project in twenty twenty-six on Cassaw three, the reclaim, is using some federal money that doesn't become available to us until later years, in two different years. So the plan reflects getting a payback of two million dollars of federal money in twenty twenty-seven. And then another million forty thousand, or million four thousand in twenty twenty-eight. So that does rely on us using our state aid allotment upfront uh and getting paid back the federal money in those later years. Yeah, uh, one topic that's received a lot of discussion in the last uh couple of years is paving of gravel fifty. Um, earlier versions of the plan showed this in twenty twenty-six. Uh, with some updated information from the solar developers, uh it's being shown here as a twenty twenty-eight project. And the main impetus behind that was to come through and pave that after they've built out their, their solar, solar farm. Um, hopefully to avoid conflicts with construction traffic, uh while we're trying to pave a road, and they've got a lot of construction traffic coming in and out. As discussed at the committee of the whole, uh Cassaw, or the fifth year of the plan, um, some recommended projects putting in there is uh with County State Aid Highway thirty-two, most people don't realize it's a state aid. Is Norman Avenue here in town, um, from Highway uh, basically Highway twenty-five up to Dewey Street is a state aid route, and has not been touched in twenty-plus years, so it's starting to deteriorate. And we're showing that as a mill and overlay, two hundred thousand dollars or so of state aid. Um, we think that Cassaw, or County Road eighty, once we build that extension down to Pa- uh, Cassaw three, I was almost gonna say Popple Creek, but Cassaw three, we're gonna see increased pressure to reconstruct that next portion of that alignment. And that's currently County Road eighty from Cassaw three down to where it intersects with Cassaw eight, their um west of Territory Golf Course. So that is a sales tax project, and it was recommended that maybe we should consider reconstructing that by twenty twenty-nine with wide shoulders to accommodate any attention, additional traffic volumes on there. This ADT is current ADT, over six hundred vehicles a day currently without that, that new alignment built between twenty-nine and three. So um, I think from an engineering standpoint, we believe it's safe to assume that that, that traffic will increase once we construct that. And it's shown as a separate project, but most likely it would be lo- uh let and combined as one, is to replace the bridge over Mayhew Creek just north of where it intersects with Cassaw eight. Uh, that is a cast-in-place box culvert that would need to be extended to accommodate um the wider shoulders on that road and the, the new road width. Due to the age of the structure and the fact that it's cast-in-place and not pre-cast sections that are easily, you know, extended on, uh, we would recommend just replacing that with a new box culvert structure to the appropriate width needed. So those are the added projects uh for the fifth year. Um, that was kind of a quick and dirty summary of everything that's uh in there, I didn't hit every project. But brought this today to open it up for discussion. Um, in the ideal world, it would be adopted today, but at least we're continuing the discussion today.
Chris, I got a, just a few points, and and maybe you can head on a couple things. I know, uh, we as a board, we look at this, you know, on a five-year plan, but we look at it every year, and we make changes and everything like that. But can you, from the legal standpoint, or from the federal funding standpoint, explain for the public why the five-year is, is needed?
Yeah, so we get, this fall, we'll get into kinda grant season, where solicitations come open to, to apply for federal surface transportation block grants. That's where a lot of our funding for reclaims and reconstructions come from. And when you're applying for those, it's five years out from this current year. So we would be applying for federal money available in twenty twenty-nine. So the, the applications we would do this fall are usually right around the um, the first of the year, and then they award them in the spring. So in twenty twenty-five, we would know if we received any grant money, but that money would not be available until twenty twenty-nine. When you fill out those applications, a, a question that gets a lot of weight and consideration is, is this project identified any ado- any, in any adopted plans? So that's why we wanna show that it's been discussed uh by the governing body and has been agreed upon that, yeah, this is a project that's needed. Uh, therefore, the governing body supports that, and that's weighted um a little bit more heavily uh on those that review and approve those, those grant applications. That being said, even though the money's not available to twenty twenty-nine, it does give me an opportunity to look at any projects before then that say, okay, this would, you know, it's in twenty twenty-seven, but maybe it's a good candidate for this, this outside funding source. Could we swing funding that project upfront with some local dollars and then repaying ourselves later with that federal money? So that's why it becomes critical to adopt it, you know, this time or uh, or September, so that it's approved when those grant applications, solicitations start coming open in October and November, so. So it's, I think it's important to be adopted in our local plan, if for some reason there was a regional plan adopted that, that carries even more weight. That doesn't always happen for, for local roads, but um, yeah, it's really important for us now to have this adopted in a a plan adopted by you, you Commissioners.
Or Mister Commissioner Heinen.
Sorry about that, Mister Chair, you know, through all of the years, we've always changed roads, okay? Through this five-year process, and this also gives us the opportunity to move other roads up that's in this process.
Mister Chair, if I could, um, is, I just wanted to make you aware that I did have a conversation with Chris yesterday, I had a conversation with Monte this morning. Uh, I don't know that we're there yet, um, I appreciate all of Chris's work on this and his presentation of it. I know the importance of passing this five-year road plan, um, I'm not ready to throw it to the side myself. I'm just, I'm torn because I don't feel we've had the necessary discussion we need to have on our local option, sales tax options. Um, there's a big list there, I realize it goes out until twenty thirty-seven, I absolutely realize that we can change these plans on a yearly basis. Um, I just, I'm not there yet to go ahead and approve this plan, I think we need some further discussion on our local option, sales tax options. Uh, Chris did, I mean, he, he mentioned today that he'd like to obviously get this done, uh but it doesn't sound like it's a drop-dead date. And I think we've gotta get together and have another cow and just make sure that we're all committed uh to the plan before we move ahead on it. At, at this point, I'm not, uh, and that's, I, I don't want that to be a negative thing on Chris or a negative thing on this board, because the board has had discussion. It's not that we haven't, I, I just, I'm not there yet, and so I want you to be aware of that. Um, and with that, I'm gonna make a motion to table this, um, until we can have some further discussion and hopefully get it on our next board meeting, or for sure the one, yeah, at the end of September.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion and a second to table the CIP five-year road plan, um, communication.
Um, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, if I, and I'm sorry, but on the, on the motion to table, there's not any other discussion?
Oh, okay.
To have you call the question.
Hmm, all right.
That is accurate.
Okay. Yeah. All right, then I'll have my discussion after, all right. I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
What were you?
I was, I was in, I was four.
Four, all right. So it, it passes forward to one to table this, uh, the discussion on my end. The reason I, I uh supported tabling it was, we've got a little time. And let's, let's make sure everybody's heard and, and, and get this out there, so.
If I may, is it worth, um, at, when we set committees of the whole, to put this on an upcoming committee of the whole for further discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
I don't think we're gonna need a ton of time.
No, we're not, we're not gonna need a ton of time.
Chris, and thank you for your work on this.
Yes, thank you.
We'll get this done. All right. Monte.
Mister Chair, your next item I bring to you on behalf of the uh court uh facility safety committee. And uh, we have an opportunity to apply for some state funding through the Minnesota port, there's five hundred thousand dollars available statewide for what they call their Safe and Secure Courthouse Grant Program. And the safety committee would like to apply for a grant to fund uh what's known as bullet-resistant glass uh in two locations. That would be the Court Administration Public Counter and then the Probation Public Counter. I included in your packet photographs of those, um. You can see in the close-up view uh photo of Court Administration, uh there is partial glass, but there is a large, oh gosh, it's at least a foot-wide gap. But there is a large, oh gosh, it's at least a foot wide gap, uh, in that glass. Also, the same thing exists, uh, but to a smaller gap in probation. So there's, uh, again, glass, but there it's not complete. So, uh, Jeff Dingman obtained two estimates from Eastside Glass, uh, to do the administration area and also probation. So, uh, in a bit of strategy, I broke those two apart, uh, in our application. The first, what I'm calling Project One is the Court Administration. That is a total cost of forty two thousand seven hundred. Project Two is probation. That's fourteen thousand five hundred. This grant program requires a fifty percent local match. A little bit of history, so, um, we received a Safe and Secure Courthouse Grant. Maybe six years ago for some additional cameras. I actually about three years ago, I was invited to be on the review committee for these grants. And my recollection is in is that they really want to try and give everyone something. So I, that's why it's strategy wise, I broke it apart because I didn't want to give them this really large one and they say, eh, it's too much. So, uh, it gave them maybe some choices to fund maybe one or one or the other, or maybe both. Who knows? We'll see what happens. I'm get expecting there will be many applications, uh, for that pool of five hundred thousand. So, Mr. Chair, what we're seeking to you today is your authorization to submit this grant. And then commit the local match of up to twenty eight thousand six hundred. And those resources can be made available made available from our CIP fund balance. That's the request of you all today.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. I think it's a no brainer anytime we can, uh, take in. Make our employees safe, so. All right, any other questions on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Okay, sin, thank you. So we're now on the consented items five and six, and this is really a package. Arrangement here. Uh, so back, if I may step back is, uh. When we did the original bid for the Benton, Ben the River Project, uh, we came in substantially under the grant award. The grant award was in round numbers eight hundred thousand. The bid in round numbers was about six hundred and seventy thousand. So we had some additional resources that we could spend. So the park commission had some discussion about, hey, what do we want to use this these resources on? And there was an agreement to basically do, uh, four things. Put class two aggregate on the new trails, class two aggregate on the existing east side trails. Put in a new well and also then bulk up the footings for the shelter. So we submitted those four items to the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission, which had to approve these additions. And I included that as essentially the exhibit to this, um, uh, contract amendment for Odessa two. It's labeled as exhibit two under the contract amendment for Odessa two. And you could see on July twenty fourth, the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission then approved these cha- these four changes. So we consequently now need to amend our agreement with Odessa two, which was the successful contractor for this project. I should point out, Mr. Chair, is we're asking Odessa to to do three of the four projects. The shelter footings and the two class two, but not the well, so we'll do that separately. Jeff has been getting estimates on the new well. So that's kind of part one of this package. The second is, and it's really the reason why I pulled this was, we also need to amend our grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. So, uh, the the amendment was really fairly minor because they'd already awarded us the eight hundred thousand. And I'll show you on this, uh, screen. This is essentially the only thing that's gonna get amended in the DNR agreement was. They initially had these categories, design, trails, parking, shelter, kiosks, signage, nature, play area. And you can see we've added the well. So the dollar amounts amongst these categories have changed, plus we added the well. The bottom line total is still seven ninety seven, five, five, five. So, uh, at the request of DNR, I sent them this. I also had to send them like a new park map which showed, okay, these trails are gonna get class two and so on and so forth. Sent that to them. They're said, hey, it's all good. So I've been waiting and waiting to get the new DNR agreement back from the state. They say it looks good. They've got everything they need, but I didn't have the actual contract for your packet. So I I still wanted to bring this to you because I know our contractor, he wants to get this stuff done, get it done, and so he can get paid for it. He can get paid. So what I'm hoping to ask you all today, and this is very unusual for me. Is to ask you to approve the DNR agreement sight unseen, just knowing that this is what's changing. The juggling of the categories, but the dollar amount in the bottom line is the same. I also, I also want to ask you this one nuance is. I think we don't want to have an effective date on the Odessa two until we have the signed DNR agreement. So if you're inclined to approve Odessa two, I would suggest this caveat to say, okay. The effective date shall be essentially the same date as when we execute the DNR agreement. They're gonna send it to us electronically and ask the board chair to sign and me to sign. So whatever that that execution date is, I'd like that to be the same execution date on Odessa two. Because I don't want. You know, there's, it's maybe like this little tiny chance there's a hiccup and I don't want essentially commit to Odessa two. But we haven't got the final commitment from DNR. That would be bad, right?
Can we sign Odessa two at the same time we do the electronic?
Uh, right, I think that's fine. You know, basically those are executed about the same time. They have the same effective date. I don't want, again, to be clear, I don't want to create a legal obligation to Odessa two until we have DNR in the can. So you can just sort of sense my apprehensions about the state of Minnesota. Uh, but again, what would seem to be simple sometimes isn't so, but they have told me they got everything they need. It's just working its way through the state. Chain, so to speak. So does that, any questions on on this arrangement?
Makes total sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, I I would ask you to approve the, first of all, the DNR, uh, the motion to amend the admit. A motion to approve an amended contract with Minnesota DNR for the legacy grant. That would be the first one, then we'll get to the Odessa one next.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same side? That motion carries.
Thank you, sir. And then in exchange, be approved the amended contract with Odessa two for improvements. Effective date shall coincide with the execution date of the DNR agreement.
Also move that.
Thank you.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Motion carries.
I just want to just add, Mr. Chair, I want to, you know, express a lot of thanks and admiration for Odessa two. They've done a super job out there. And been very flexible with us. Jim Jansen is a great person, a great person to work with. Uh, I almost want to acknowledge Jeff, uh, Dingman who's made visit many visits out to parks, keeping an eye on things. I really appreciate that. And lastly, want to acknowledge, uh, uh, Scott Zwick. He recreated this this project map for us and it's super. It looks way better than when SRF did. So I want to make sure I acknowledge, uh, Scott Zwick and his talents as a GS person who recreated that map for us, so that really was helpful. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. All right, I think with the, uh, uh, board's approval, we'll move into the the health board. Okay, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Heinen.
Thank you. At this point in time, we call over the Benton County Community Health Board. Note that all members are present for the roll call. Approve or amend the agenda? I see we have two other additional agenda items, correct?
We do.
Okay, which one would you like to take first then?
Let's go ahead and, um, we can start with the introduction of our new AmeriCorps members and then I would just wanted to add on and introduce the introduction to our new community health specialist as well.
Three B, okay.
Yep, and then I have a request for another grant opportunity that I wanted to ask about so we could get an application in for that as well.
That'd be three C, okay.
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, the consent agenda item, one through two, what would you like to do with that?
Move for approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now I'll wait until Jaclyn's done. Oh, we have already have this. Okay. Yeah, we have everything. Okay, Jaclyn, introduction of the new public health AmeriCorps members.
Yes, so good morning. Um, thanks for the time on the agenda this morning. So we have with us, um, AmeriCorps members. We have one individual who is returning, who served with us last year. And we have two individuals who are coming this year full time, um, for forty hours a week throughout this service year, whose time will end in June. So I thought it would take some time to just introduce, um, our members to the board. Uh, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had agreed to partner with the Minnesota Department of Health on signing up for public health core members. AmeriCorps covers the cost of salary and benefits, um, for the individuals. They are partnered with site and then they are partnered with us to expand our public health capacity. Some of them are part time, some full time. We have all full time members, forty hours a week through their service term. So I'll just call them up so you can have a face with the name. Um, so we'll call up Tara, Tabitha and Tina, so they can come on over here. And we'll have, um, we'll just let Tina introduce herself first. So Tina is actually gonna be with us this summer as a temporary employee and then her AmeriCorps term again, um, in September. Tabitha and Tara, they are serving from July thirtieth to June, the end of June twenty eight, so excited to have them here. Go ahead and just introduce yourself, Tina.
Hi, my name is Tina. Um, I'm the AmeriCorps from the previous year and I'm coming back again this year. And I am working right now under one of the Benton County contract employee during my little break, so I do appreciate you guys for giving me the opportunity. But currently right now, I'm going to school for community health at St. Cloud State and I'm a senior this year, so I'll be graduating this spring. And, um, some of the projects I'm working on is the video in the day to see what public health, uh, professionals do in the day. Uh, help out with the Central Minnesota Alliance, the Mental Health Toolkit, along with the ship, um, substance news and whatnot, um, community outreach events and whatnot, so that's what I do.
Great, welcome back. Welcome. Thanks for coming back, yeah.
Thank you.
Please remember us when you, uh, graduate too.
My name's Tabitha. Uh, a little bit of background is that I ha- I'm a registered nurse. Uh, I got my bachelor's degree last September. And that I do have some other education under my belt as a vet tech and, um, medical assistance previously as well. Just got an assignment yesterday on the cannabis, so gonna be looking forward to working on that. And just doing a lot of training these last couple of weeks.
Great, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Especially for being on the cannabis ordinance.
Uh, I'm Tara Wilbanks Colby. I am a senior at St. Cloud State University as well. I am going for a double ba- double bachelor's degrees in psychology and history. I'm also a licensed CNA. I work overnight as a CNA. Like Tabitha said, we just got the cannabis project yesterday, so we are starting on that. And I've been in Minnesota about nine years now, so looking forward to learning more.
Great, welcome.
Right.
And thank you.
Once again, keep us in mind when you graduate.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then one of our additional agenda items today is we had a new community health specialist filling our open community health specialist position yesterday. So I'll call Emma up. She started here with us yesterday and was already ready to come get introduced today, so I'll let her say a little bit about herself as well.
Hi, I'm Emma Hansen and like she said, I'm the new community health specialist. I just recently graduated with my master's of public health and last year I was actually a public health core member with Sherburne County, so I'm excited to be here where I live and work here.
Great.
Welcome.
Welcome to Benton County.
So Emma will be taking on our planning and communications coordinator role with our community health specialists, um, filling our vacant position. And we'll working be working primarily in our chip grant as well with Mariah, so. Happy to have all of them here. Each of them bring a unique skill set with them, which is gonna serve our county well, so excited to see what the year brings and, um, continue on with them. The additional agenda item that I had today was just to add on a request. So Medica has announced another funding opportunity. Um, I was here at our last board meeting requesting to apply for some funds from Medica as well. Through that application process, we we were become aware that there was another option for some innovation funding. So would like to ask the board approval to submit a request to receive, um, up to five thousand dollars that would be spent, um, or expended by the end of this year. That we could use towards advancing and addressing health needs of members in our community, so.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. If any questions, the only question I have is when we're applying for all these grants, is there a match or anything?
The ones from Medica, no. Those ones are just from the Medica Foundation or Innovation Fund.
Innovation.
Yes, no match for that one.
Thank you for finding these.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Question.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Jaclyn?
That is it.
Great, thank you and welcome to all the new members.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Bye.
We had one member that hasn't even talked yet. Be in the back.
Oh, she's been introduced already.
I know, but. We don't want to leave her out.
Oh, that's true. Thank you, everyone. At this point, I'll adjourn our, uh, Benton County Community Health Board and turn it over to the board chair.
All right. I think for time, let's, uh, go right through the committees. Any meeting updates?
I can start, Mr. Chair. Obviously, on August sixth, we did have our call for the five year road. Appreciate all the time.
Chris, you want to speak on that?
Uh, August eighth, our planning commission meeting and one of the highlights, we talked about that ordinance change here today. On August twelfth, our committee of the whole with human services, um, like, uh, thirteenth, for those that were in attendance, the call for the foster care picnic. That was well attended and and got a chance to sit down and visit with some people, so that was awesome. Um, on the fourteenth, Commissioner Pop and I met with Chris and Mark Ebner and some officials from Granite Ledge. And met him out on site on County Road fifty four, talking about the turnback situation there, so that's still in process. Commissioner Pop and I also were canvassing the primary on August fifteenth. And of course, yesterday, our budget meeting, so brings us up to date.
Mr. Chair, thank you for, uh, taking my spot. Not around at that.
Yep.
For the canvassing board. I appreciate that.
That worked out. I wasn't on the ballot, so it worked, yeah.
I had about the same ones as as Scott did, uh, except I had MICA. We had an executive committee meeting to discuss fees and, uh, we haven't discussed salaries yet. Um, and then entering into a contract to, instead of hiring somebody for to replace Steve Novak's, we're going to contract it out. And then we're gonna look at some other things, um, instead of, we're gonna more play the environment and natural resources by ear. You know, a lot of the stuff we do, both organizations seem to mirror AMC. And MICA seem to mirror what they want, so there's no sense for them both trying to take credit for it. Let's work with them somehow, you know? AMC's got Brian Martenson, who does a lot and knows everybody in that deal, so we're gonna have some more discussion on that. Um, the other dis- the other discussion that came forth was that, uh, we're really having a hard time. Getting Anoka County to commit to being a part of MICA. It seems like we take two steps forward and one step back. Maybe Chris could talk to their engineer. I understand you know him.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
He used to be a Benton County person. And it just seems like they ju- I don't know. Now I think they're waiting for the election because, you know, they got some contested races. They got an open seat, well, somebody resigned. Couple of them didn't want to commit now because they have, and in the process, they kept going from like fifty percent to thirty percent to twenty percent of what they should have paid when they were gonna join last March. So we don't know if they're gonna be there next year or not. We're using now that, you know, we start the policy stuff. And if you're not at the table in October, you really are not gonna have a say in what we're gonna do in the next legislative session, so. I don't know. It just seems like they're they're really tough, so if you know anybody personally from the Anoka County Board, tell them to get on board.
Did one resign there, huh?
Yeah, um, took a different position. So they just left it open. They've been running with six.
Okay. Commissioner Schlangen? Or do you need a little time?
Was it the foster, um, care picnic and?
Tricamp meeting. I listened in on the cannabis management from the state of Minnesota on their overview. Then we had career solutions.
Did he call you?
Township meeting. And I went to the energy at the Coyote Open House. I think that was called it.
Okay, I'll go next, Mr. Chair, if that's all right. So I did another WJON radio interview on the foster care parents. That went very well. Kudos to the two members that were with me. Sean, I'm not good with the last names. I apologize. And then we also had a foster parent there talking with us on the radio. Found out when we went to the picnic, foster care picnic, that they already had three or four calls already about it. So that was very good, very good. Had a SHAC meeting, nothing new there. Career Solutions, everything's going just fine there. Human Services, I mean, just about everything everybody else had. But I also spent three days in Duluth, because I'm on the Minnesota Workforce Board with the state. And that was probably one of the best ones I've been to. Very, very knowledgeable, very interesting. Then, of course, budget. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
All right, I've had pretty much everything everybody else had. It's kinda nice going last. I can't say enough about that foster care deal. You know, baby next year. I know, Tim, you cover the Sauk Rapids, and you got somebody from Benton County, the Benton County News here. But man, having that in Sauk Rapids might be a good hit.
Yep.
They really do a great job, and the parents are great.
To follow up on that, we're also looking for foster parents that live in the city of Sauk Rapids because of the school district.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, are you meaning hold the event there or have it in the Sauk Rapids Herald?
Having it in the Sauk Rapids Herald. Yep.
Yep.
Tim does a great job, and I think that would be a...
And Hans was there, I think.
Yep, he was. Oh, yeah, yep. So I did have an EPO meeting. That was pretty uneventful. We discussed a few things when, you know, going out to DC and everything like that. We had our solid waste meeting last night. That was, that was pretty uneventful as well. Other than that, that's really all I had. All the committees of the whole and budget and, you know, another day tomorrow, so.
Kinda seems like we're living here.
Yeah.
I did participate with the RSVP recognition day two in St. Cloud and helped out with that, and there'll be a couple more coming up.
Okay. All right. I think before we adjourn, maybe we'll turn right over to... We'll just adjourn this.
Mr. Chair, you said cows.
Oh, yeah.
Really? We have more?
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, it's big ones.
All in September? Great.
Absolutely.
All right, Monty, you're up.
So, okay, the next Township Officers Association Fall Meeting is Thursday, September nineteenth, seven-thirty, Glendorado Town Hall. It's the nineteenth at seven-thirty, Glendorado Town Hall. So we need to schedule your final budget discussion on the proposed two thousand twenty-five, I have on here, two thousand twenty-five budget levy. So just a point of reference, so you've scheduled your adoption for September twenty-third, September twenty-third. So let me suggest you have your budget discussion no less than one week prior, no less than one week prior. So like...
Mr. Chair, sorry, Monty, the date was September twenty-third, you said?
That's what I have on my calendar here.
I don't have that on mine, so what time?
I'm sorry. I, I thought we...
That was in the front of the book, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What date do you have?
I don't, I don't have one. So I may have missed the... September twenty-third, but I don't have it.
If I have it correct, you know, the board agreed to have a special meeting to adopt the proposed budget levy.
Okay, so September twenty-third at what time? Nine o'clock.
I'm sorry, could you? Yeah, it wouldn't be on the Cal calendar, right?
So special board meeting. Yep.
We could just say it at nine.
Yeah.
Or eight, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock. That's when we have all our board meetings. Steve, you didn't have that either?
No, I did not have that on mine.
You even around?
Yes, yes, I am.
You, Steve, you won't be around the sixteenth?
No, I'm...
Nine AM on September twenty. That was the agreement. Of course, you can always change that.
No, that's fine.
That's fine. Nine AM on September. So if you could have this budget discussion again, maybe not less than about a week before.
So just so you know, I am gone the fourteenth through the twenty-second that week.
Okay, fourteenth through twenty-second, so that means maybe the week of the ninth, ninth, and our fall policy is eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, looks like. So it looks like we're down to like the ninth or the tenth.
I could do either.
I could do the tenth. I can't do the ninth.
Okay.
Yeah, I always schedule meetings on Tuesdays.
So the tenth?
Ten in the morning.
That's, that's the follow-up budget meeting.
That's what we have to get.
So we get consensus down to get it for the twenty-third?
So September tenth at what time?
Nine.
Nine?
Eight thirty-nine.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty?
Yeah, quicker, yeah.
So September tenth at eight-thirty, final budget discussion. Okay. I also had on my list a desire to have a committee of the whole on the topic of wetlands administration, how we do wetlands. So we also heard we need to have a committee of the whole on the five-year road program, so perhaps you could package those two together. How about putting together the wetlands discussion and the five-year road program? I see Roxanne is with us online, help us with dates. So obviously, fourteenth through the twenty-second is out.
How about Tuesday, August twenty-seven?
How long is that gonna take, though, for the, for the wetland deal, would you say? Because I can't believe that the road one is gonna be more than a half an hour.
Yeah, we can do them two together. Could do them together.
I was just wondering if we couldn't tackle those on the same September tenth?
On the tenth?
Okay.
But you won't be, yeah, you'll be here.
No, I'm here the tenth.
Okay, so we'll just try and knock it all out on the tenth? Okay.
Is there, is there any way to get this discussed sooner? I don't think my discussion will take very long.
Come out wetlands?
In time, we've got applicants that are out there waiting.
Oh, so you're thinking, so in August still? Okay.
If possible, if not, we'll manage.
Okay.
Next week?
Well, you've gotta leave tomorrow by noon, so.
How about next week then?
Twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh is open for me.
Twenty-seventh would have to be early. I gotta be, I gotta meet with the AMC extension.
Do as early as we want. Eight o'clock?
So August twenty-seventh at...
I don't know if we've got, that works for him and I. I haven't heard from him.
That's a Tuesday?
Okay, got a question. How, how long do you think the budget, well, that's gonna go till noon for sure?
I don't know. I mean, we usually get it done in about two hours.
Tomorrow?
No, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm talking about tomorrow.
Oh, since we're here? I have things to do in the afternoon.
Yeah, I've got a, I gotta leave for the airport at noon.
Well, we're booked. You're booked solid all morning, yeah. You're booked solid.
Does the twenty-seventh work for you guys? Anybody? Works for me.
I think it'll work for me.
What's your start time?
Could we do twenty-six that Monday?
Yeah, I can do that.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Eight twenty-six at...
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty. That's becoming our new standard.
And just, and Commissioner Heinig, you can join.
I, I know. I, I might, yeah. I'll make it work one way or another. I might have to.
Yeah, remember, we can all join virtual four or five times, whatever we think.
Just, we will need your address no less than three days prior, so we can post that on the agenda, right?
So this would be wetlands and highway.
Highway, road, wetlands and road program, right, on August twenty-sixth at eight-thirty.
That'd be, that'll be good, because it'll get us some consensus to get it on the first meeting in September.
Does that work? Roxanne, Roxanne, you good? The last thing I had on my list was there was a desire, and I see Sandy is with us to schedule a tour of the Rivercrest facility. The Rivercrest facility tour. Sandy, are you still with us there? I see you up on the screen.
Where's Rivercrest down in St. Cloud?
Did you by chance ID some dates for a tour?
It's just around the corner from...
I did not. I thought the board probably had a number of dates that were already filled, so I did not.
Okay.
It's gonna be the end of September for me.
End of December, you said?
September, September.
I don't have very good hearing in my left ear. I apologize.
Could we do this after our board meeting on the twenty-third? On the twenty-third of September?
I don't see why I can't. Yeah, because that's gonna be a really short meeting. Yeah, that's gonna be a twenty-minute meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, Sandy, do you hear that? So roughly, let's just say, let's see, we're starting at nine. You could get there by ten-thirty. Ten, ten-thirty? Let's just say ten. You think ten AM on Monday, the twenty-third would work?
I will check it out. I would imagine so.
Okay, so ten AM, Monday, September twenty-third, Rivercrest tour. Okay, and we'll get you details.
Is that the only facility you wish to see, or was there a wish to see Lincoln Center or anything else?
No, one's enough for me.
Really, Commissioner Pop?
Yeah.
You should see them all.
Well, you know, maybe as an option, if board members wanna see Lincoln.
They can always...
How long's it take to go through them?
Well, I can set a limit with them. I imagine that they could talk quite a while at either facility. But I mean, depends on what kind of time we have. I certainly set a half-hour limit at both places, you know, or a half-hour at one and fifteen, twenty minutes at the other, fifteen minutes, twenty.
Maybe we do fifteen at Lincoln, half-hour at...
Whoever can go, can go.
Yep. Okay, let's do that.
All right, so rough start time is ten AM on the twenty-third.
I can assure you, a half-hour won't be long enough for the first visit because of questions and everything, just to give you guys a heads-up warning.
Okay, we'll work out the details during the, Mr. Chair, that is all we have.
You're positive, okay?
Yes, sir, positive.
Move for approval of the cows, Mr. Chair.
Second, can't we subtract any of them or...
Okay, we got a motion for approval of the cows. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. County Board is adjourned at ten-twenty-one. I'm gonna turn it gladly over to Commissioner Johnson for the ditch.
All right, we're called to order our Benton County Ditch Authority meeting. We'll call, we're all present, approve or amend the agenda. Chris, any changes?
I have no changes. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda is presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, is carried. Our consent agenda, approve or amend the meeting minutes from July sixteenth of twenty-four.
Second.
Motion second to approve those minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Chris, discussion of potential maintenance assessments for twenty-five.
All right, so this is a meeting that's been on our meeting calendar all year, and it's this, this practice that we want to start and become an annual practice, where this, this time of year, every year, we discuss potential maintenance assessments for the upcoming year. We've made a commitment to when we repair a ditch that we're going to continue maintaining it in the future. So those costs to maintain it or perform maintenance on those ditches is a cost to the ditch system and is repaid by assessments. So this was in your packet. This is a document I created, and I took it kind of as a ditch inspector point of view of it, kind of looking at what the, the fund balance is of the current, or the current fund balance for each of the ditch systems, then look at what we might do for maintenance costs in the upcoming year. Kind of come up with an estimate or a dollar amount for that, and that kind of becomes the basis for the recommendation for the maintenance assessment. This would be a one-time or an annual, say, annual, this would be a one-time assessment. So if this was approved for each of the ditch systems, that dollar amount would get applied to all the benefited landowners on that ditch system, apportioned out based on their percent of benefits they receive from that ditch to the total benefits provided by that ditch. And they would be expected to pay that on their property taxes for the upcoming year. And then we would do this, have the same conversation next year and discuss the same things. What's the current fund balance? What's the anticipated maintenance next year? What's that cost? And then assess accordingly. Admittedly, this is their first time doing this, so the numbers are not real tight. We're, you know, I'll be honest, we're not quite sure what it would come. Maybe we do some maintenance on some of the ditches, and it's more than what we assessed for. Then I would anticipate this conversation next year surrounding around that. Well, it's like, well, the maintenance costs a little bit more, so we have a deficit. We would need to, to assess for those costs that we incurred the previous year. So this is, I wanna just preface that by saying that, and then this is kind of a basis or a base year. We had to start somewhere, I believe, on this maintenance assessment. So this document is something that counties across the state have done something similar at these type of meetings. You know, you list your ditches and what your recommended assessment are. So I provide a little bit of additional information, and if it's okay, we'll kind of maybe go through each of these now. Starting with our lowest number ditch, ditch three, we have a current fund balance, from what I could see, of about eleven thousand dollars. We have some pending assessments for next year. If you remember, we had a repair project, and we did a multi-year assessment on that. Anticipated expenses for twenty-twenty-five, I'm estimating maybe about five thousand dollars. And that would be mowing of those buffer strips on both sides next year. So that balance forward, you take out the current funding balance, what we're already anticipating receiving as pending assessments from the repair project, that leaves a anticipated forward balance of a negative ten thousand eighty-one dollars and forty-four cents. So for County Ditch Three, I would recommend having an assessment next year of ten thousand dollars to get that close to being whole.
Chris, can I interrupt you when you're, as you're going through this? I need some clarification on how you're getting the current fund balance. Where, where are those dollars?
So that comes from, yeah, that comes from our accounting reporting system. That's what it shows as negative based on the cost that we've incurred so far. And, yeah, so the cost that we've incurred so far minus any assessments that we've already received.
So just for clarification, though, none of these ditches had dollar balances in them before we started any of this project?
Yes, that is, that is a fair statement. It was, so assume each ditch had a zero fund balance. Some of them actually had some negative fund balances before we even started the repair projects, so.
So that's probably where this negative ten thousand is coming in, is they started probably with a negative balance?
Well, I wouldn't say that. I would say, and Christine, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, that's what's left of that repair project. What I could see, it looked like Christine had received most of the assessments. If you recall, it was a multi-year, I don't recall, how many years was it? Seven, six?
Seven years.
Seven years, so next, even twenty-twenty-five is only year three or four?
Two.
Oh, year two. So she received most of them. So you divide that out by seven years, anticipating fifty-eight hundred dollars of assessments coming in next year of that seven years, leaving some balance still to be paid. If you, if, track my thinking. Let me, let me back up. So the current fund balance of ten thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-one cents is from that repair project and the retermination of benefits, buffer strip payments, all that. But we're only in year two. There's still five more years to collect that based on the assessment rolls and the liens that the auditor's office has put on property tax, anticipating fifty-eight hundred dollars of assessments next year. Plus five thousand dollars of additional cost next year, we get to a balance, an anticipated negative balance of ten thousand eighty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
But when you say a repair project pending assessments, that's just that. So that tells me there's fifty-eight hundred dollars out in assessments yet on the repair project. But you've got a negative ten thousand dollar balance coming in.
Oh, okay. Let me clarify, that fifty-eight hundred dollars would be just for next year. That's what's expected.
Okay.
So you could, you could anticipate another fifty-eight hundred dollars the following year. So you could you can just pay another fifty eight hundred dollars the following year. Not exactly because there's interest applied on on that.
And then county ditch four which you haven't gotten to yet cuz I interrupted you is um that must have came in with a negative balance because we haven't dealt with CD four that I'm aware of.
But if you remember we did a redetermination of benefits on all the ditches.
Yeah so.
So that's where those costs for doing the redetermination of benefits we haven't done any assessments yet.
But what if but if that's the case we're missing some ditches on here then like like thirteen I didn't see thirteen and fifteen listed here.
Correct that's a good point um and that's because when we completed the repair projects and certified the assessments that assessment certification already had a maintenance uh assessment fund component in it.
Okay which they all should have in my book yes I agree.
So yeah and so some of the anticipation or some of the purpose of this is to maybe start some maintenance assessments on those ditches that we don't have a repair petition and aren't planning on a a full scale repair project yet.
So these are all ditches that we don't have a repair to petition on?
Uh you mostly um I'll throw in here ditch ten and ditch twelve. We do have repair petitions but we do have currently negative fund balances for them quite a bit. Ditch this ditch we'll talk about ditch ten cuz this is a large that is a large system a lot of benefited property owners. Um so and we've already ordered the the repair report for that. So we have a large negative fund balance of you know a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars here and that's because of the redetermination of benefits um and the engineering costs that have incurred so far.
So when we do ditch ten we should build in can we build in the probably Michelle will know this no. Um can't we build in like for three years worth of maintenance after we do the repair? Because you can't go back after these people paid an assessment to get their ditch clean and then next year you come back and say we want another five thousand or ten thousand bucks. You this is not gonna work they will scream at you.
But what are we what are we gonna do on CD ten if the repair estimate comes in higher than the benefits?
Yeah.
We still got a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollar negative balance because we did a redetermination.
Mm-hmm so yeah we've already incurred costs to the system that we've had to borrow from you know the general fund in our case but.
So the cost could exceed the benefited.
Uh yeah sure but we did the redetermination. Go ahead Michelle yeah.
Technically the redetermination would be a separate cost from the repair cost.
Yeah.
So if we could actually separate what that redetermination cost is from engineering costs that we've already incurred with the repair petition I think that would be wise.
So do I hear you saying we could assess the redetermination of benefits without doing a repair?
Absolutely yep um now if it's part of the repair project like if that's what the impetus was for we had a repair petition and we noticed emitted properties and we did the redetermination then I think we probably assess it all at once although you could probably still separate those costs. But for ditch ten and twelve we did the redetermination before we had petitions. So I think we kinda look at those costs separately.
Sure.
Um and in addition it is common practice where we do repairs for a lot of the counties and Christine may be able to speak to this better than me that they do charge like a five thousand dollar assessment each year even though it was just repaired just because you're trying to keep up with that maintenance cost.
Yeah we're a small county in the ditch system deal and most of the counties have they'll have like ditch eighty five. They will collect every year on the taxes and then that stays in that fund and when the county needs to make a repair or something like that they just grab it we don't have to have all this.
But the problem is we haven't done that.
We haven't done that but we need to move to that eventually.
Is that your point about adding the first three years of maintenance?
Yeah and and then in that then we have to add on that as we go forward with the the ditches and we wanna keep them where we're at. We're gonna assess you two dollars per year and build that fund so that when we come on year five and we gotta do repair you just grab it and do the repair if we gotta do some mowing you just grab it and do it. You don't have to have all this ditch meetings to do it you got if if we want a ditch system that's gonna be up to par all the time you have to have a maintenance fund right within that ditch itself.
That is kind of the point of these annual meetings Sherburne County does it just like you said they charge two dollars an acre or whatever they figure out a cost.
Most counties do.
Yep and then other counties choose to do it kind of what Chris is proposing where we've got some estimated costs and we're going to assess that for the year because that's what we believe the cost will be so that we don't have to you know have a negative balance.
That's I don't like the second deal because if I come out and tell my constituents we're gonna charge you fifteen dollars an acre cuz we're gonna do a repair they're gonna keep calling every time if you charge them every year a certain amount and it goes into the fund like ditch seven at one time had some money in the fund you could do a repair. And that's where you need to go you don't need I I because every time you charge somebody and you have a public hearing that you're gonna charge him or something like that you're gonna get calls and you're gonna get people that show up if you do it once and say we're gonna charge this much per acre per year on your taxes to maintain this ditch and we're good. And if there's if the repair is really big then we have to go that other route.
How how far do we peel that onion back then is it all benefited acres or is it is there a tier level?
Well so we haven't got down to the nitty gritty but let's we go back to um ditch three so what I was anticipating is if ten thousand dollars would be the recommended assessment uh uh for twenty twenty five then apportion that over all the benefited acres um according to the viewers report you know their percentage of benefit so some people are are paying five bucks some people are maybe paying a hundred and fifty bucks based on their benefited acres so it's not it wasn't it wouldn't be in my opinion shouldn't be is a flat dollar amount per acre follow the apportionment.
You gotta follow that that's.
Yeah mm-hmm. So when you think about it though with the whole repair project what was that you know that we certified a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over seven years?
You would never have that much money but we want maintenance we don't want repairs you know we want maintenance on these ditches right?
Yep and so yeah i- it's we're trying to build up a savings account and the hardest part is always starting it's coming up with the money to put into your savings account.
Cause for all this do we have to have a public hearing then if we wanna do this?
So this is the hearing for these annual assessments so because you set it.
Yeah.
When you set all of your meetings and you announced that you were going to have this meeting.
Okay.
This acts as that meeting so even in Sherburne County Renville County I believe Christine got some feedback from them. They always hold this annual meeting to address.
Okay.
The amount that's either going to be assessed per acre or doing it like Chris is proposing like a ten thousand dollar assessment and then it's apportioned accordingly.
Just for the record I I don't think people would have got that we're actually gonna set this today from discussion of potential maintenance assessments.
I mean we didn't listen as a public hearing.
Yeah so we might have to do that one more time maybe even come back with the CIP.
Thoughts on that Michelle?
It says we may hold a hearing and and they use the language hearing so everyone's welcome but you only have to publish notice. And that's what was recommended by many counties so you know everyone's free to come discuss and be heard.
So it was how it was published we didn't note we didn't notice.
So it we published notice that this was happening and it was set up as an annual meeting at the beginning.
At your yeah at the first meeting of the year this was put on the calendar.
Okay you know I mean if you go back to what Jared said the person that paid say eighty thousand dollars to have his ditch cleaned on ditch six will gladly pay to have that maintenance a little bit of an assessment for the maintenance every year cuz you don't wanna go back and have to pay eighty thousand another fifteen years.
Right yeah.
You know uh Mr. Chair and some of the farmers that actually talked to me about this you know said the exact same thing Commissioner Pop assess me two dollars an acre per year on our taxes I don't care that's fine.
They're just using example that what they wanted.
Yeah cuz they don't want that fifteen thousand dollar assessment again.
I think we gotta be careful on cuz we're mixing little terminology here about assessing per acres versus benefits.
We gotta yeah it's benefits.
Correct benefited benefited acres sorry thank you for that clarification yep.
And two is just an example.
Yes.
So is if we did this and we set up a you know this on ditch three a ten thousand dollar this year uh assessment would it be safe to say that in next year at the annual meeting which would be next year at this time we set another ten thousand dollars?
It could be or it could be less if our anticipated maintenance costs were less than what we anticipated and we had a positive fund balance maybe um I recommend something less or you as a board say well we're okay drawing that fund balance a little bit down closer to zero let's not let's assess for fi- only five thousand in twenty twenty six.
I've seen a couple of the ditches that have been done and they have not been like cut or anything like that. And if the counties gotta go through and cut those we gotta be getting money back for you know the the mowers and everything like that to go down these.
Well I don't I don't think we've had that discussion yet about who's gonna be doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh I I think the original discussion was we were not. Well so that's part of his ten thousand dollars is to pay XYZ to go mow the buffer strips on CD three.
Yeah that's why I in my opinion I think getting townships involved would be great cuz if they had a mower maybe they could. Somebody's gotta do it.
I don't think they'd want to.
Well it might be easier.
The other part is that you know we we haven't even touched on fif- thirteen and fifteen and if we don't do something on thirteen and fifteen pretty quick we're gonna be in a repair. We're gonna be in a repair because that is I mean how many years has it been Chris since we were out there?
We yeah we've got a year or two left of those their seven year assessment so.
And I mean it's you go look at it.
Oh yeah.
It's not it's not pretty anymore.
Well CD six already needs maintenance the buffer's gotta get mowed.
Yeah.
But them are ea- you know if you do it yearly.
No it's easy. That's what I'm saying I I I think I think we need to build those up and you know when it gets to a certain amount we gotta find out how how much it costs to mow and that's where I'm saying maybe it might be the county's best option is to go mow them charge it out and then we have a here's here's worst case scenario if people take care of it on their own it it won't cost the ditch this. But but we have to make sure we have enough in there to cover the maintenance on a yearly basis and then if a tree goes in you know you you factor all that.
Yeah. It's the toughest part is getting started where do we start is that ten thousand is that five thousand is it something higher?
I I would like to see that ten thousand what that is broke out between the benefited people.
I knew you would ask that.
Thank you Chris.
Yeah.
You were just hiding it from us until.
So I I tried to find who would be the largest one and and I don't know if you want me to say their names but um I mean that's it's uh ten thousand.
We don't need names we just need.
It's you know a hundred and fifty six dollars a hundred and fifty s- next year.
And they'll gladly pay that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
But they don't wanna come back with fifteen hundred dollars no way. Coming from the committee here I like your guys' saying they will gladly pay that because I think.
You may have a couple that are gonna come back and talk to Christine like why is this on my tax statement?
How long is this ditch right here?
Oh three is our shortest one that's the one from behind the Honda house up to highway ten.
Yeah so three miles.
It's not even that is it a mile even so.
I mean you're gonna have some people that probably is gonna be the assessment's gonna be pretty big on some of them ditches I would think.
I'm sorry I missed.
The city.
Looks like this is the highest a hundred and seventy three dollars is this person.
Oh oh no I know who it is yeah it's gotta be.
I know who you're thinking of. Then remember a lot of these port these costs got sent to the city and the city of Sock Rapids and St. Cloud since they they're the parcels within their museum founders received a lot of the benefit so. But from a city standpoint um sixty seven hundred dollars or fourteen hundred dollars doesn't seem like an outrageous amount.
And on that ditch maybe the city of Sock Rapids could use their mowers and go up and down that and charge the ditch.
Yeah I I think for accounting purposes and once again to be able to attest to the people paying this is we have a an invoice somebody invoiced us to do that actual work. I mean that's that's the best documentation to show the actual cost of that.
Cuz if we're not mowing them we're not seeing damages. We're not seeing trees and limbs down we're not see cuz it's all being covered up by the the overgrowth. We need to have these mowed yearly in order to maintain.
I guess I'd from my perspective is let's have some faith in Chris's projected numbers and like you said it's a starting point we're gonna have to find out.
I I agree.
What it is and move forward on it. Yeah I with that caveat though to my perspective Commissioner Pinsky is I don't know if highways in this position to put time and effort in to mowing our ditches I I I think we have to. What do we have to go for an hour for proposals on this?
No we would get quotes.
Okay so get some quotes and ABC comes in at eighty five hundred bucks to mow it and you got an invoice and you pay it.
I'll have the conversation and in Alexandria with some of the counties that have lots of ditches what they do if the county does it or they hire it out I would bet they hire it out.
I would think so I don't know that our I mean correct Christine correct me if I'm wrong but I don't think your guys are looking for more work over there.
You're you've been staff since nineteen eighty right or or at nineteen eighty.
That's right yeah yeah. Um but yeah that's exactly right uh um are are we yeah we're not mowing our even our road ditches at this point so um.
Like do we have a mower on a on a track skid loader that you could use?
We do not.
See you I mean that's what you gotta have.
I I would bet that you could get hold of Hellman or somebody like that.
That's what I said dwell for a quote.
Mr. Chair I I think I I think it's in the best interest of the board to have it hired out for the first year or the first two years so that we have documentation of what it actually costs okay and that'd be the fair way of going about.
I agree and sooner than later.
Yeah.
Three needs it done six needs it done seven probably needs it done.
I you're right sorry Mr. Chair I agree if they all need it done you throw them all together in one big proposal.
Get going on it.
And and see what we get.
And I would bet kind of a you know with Hellman knowing the ditches I would bet they could give you off the cuff approximate to to judge these numbers by.
Yeah the only thing that will change is if landowner A makes his hay and B don't and then C and D do you you know you'll have a lot less um lot less to do on one ditch than you would another.
I guess the next question is are they aware that they can do it did we give them the authority to do it?
Anybody that wants the to do it knows that you can do it. And especially once it's maintained a year or two and all the growth is chewed up and you just got grass coming they'll go after that.
So this is my question and I agree with you if they can do it all the better but at that point in time after they mow it we should have to inspect it though too I mean it's gotta be inspected somehow some way right?
I think that's on probably on Chris's discussion tomorrow in his budget presentation.
I I'm just throwing things out.
Yeah somebody has to look at it.
I would prefer the farmers to have the ability to do it to make hay or whatever they wanna do with that but yet at the end of the day when they do it somebody's gotta go out there and inspect it just to make sure it's looking good right?
I mean truthfully we should be inspecting them all once a year right?
Yeah.
And you're right that's that's a cost to the system as well to to perform those inspections so. So the mechanism to actually approve this um is I think um eventually we'll have to get to an order you know something that's signed and certified and lists each of the ditches so something that'll probably have to be prepared and brought back to the next meeting. But at this time I think it's beneficial and warrants you know a specific conversation on each ditch or just go through each ditch and make sure that that's the number that 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 we wanna use so.
I'm disappointed we don't have fifteen and thirteen on there.
Once again when thirteen fifteen yeah were certified we that's it's more of just not being able to to do it.
Okay.
When the levy or when the assessment was certified for the repair it had I had an amount in there for a maintenance fund it's just it hasn't started been collecting yet because the repair project hasn't been
Completed.
Uh paid off so to speak.
So it won't start until the repair project is played off?
That's that's kinda what I understand when you look at the the certified o- order the order that certified the assessment only the amount of the repair project has been collected. But then once all that repair project costs have been collected that order did establish an amount for a repair fund.
But in that case it's gonna be a seven years too late.
Too late.
Yeah well I mean that's that's the other way of looking at it yeah.
Instead of being this big of a tree we're gonna be this big of a tree.
But I mean it comes back to I mean we've had a lot of conversations about fund balances over the over this year and what we've outlaid out it comes back to a comfort level do do we need It comes back to a comfort level, do, do we need, need to go ahead and order some repair work now and be comfortable with letting that. Balance go more negative? That, that's, that's the trade off, I guess, we could go and start doing that, cause yeah, we haven't collected that repair fund yet.
But some of the trade off to that is our maintenance costs are gonna go up because we haven't done it.
Yeah, in year one, it's not too bad, in year five, it's pretty big.
Right. And if we get into a repair position again, oh, boy.
Well, County Ditch Three, is the drainage authority, uh. Agreeable to assessing for ten thousand in twenty twenty-five for?
Yes.
Uh, I wanna throw one quick caveat in there, Chris, I know it's on your budget proposal tomorrow, but how about ditch inspections, do we need to build that into that? Assessment number, is it billable back?
Uh, yes, it's billable back, and yes, I partially kind of accounted for that in some of these costs, so.
Perfect.
Uh, once again, I. Kinda shooting from the hip here, cause I don't know actually how much it, how much cost it will require just on inspection.
Sure.
Services, so.
Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, we need to make sure we document on all.
Okay, sorry, back to three.
Uh, is ten thousand dollars, I don't know, do we need to vote for each one, or would you say, reach a consensus?
All right, so C D three. The recommended twenty twenty-five assessment of ten thousand.
Motion.
Second. Motion second on that, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay, C D four.
Um, similar alongside, same thing, uh, anticipating, we need to pay buffer strip payments out. Uh, those are eighty-two hundred dollars, um, that would leave us with a negative balance of fifteen thousand two hundred forty-seven, so I rounded. To the nearest thousand dollars of fifteen thousand dollars, recommended assessment for ditch four next year.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried.
County ditch five, very similar to four, uh, we have seventy-eight hundred dollars negative fund balance. Uh, due to the redetermination of benefits process, we owe those benefited or those landowners thirty-three thousand dollars of buffer strip payments. That would give us a negative fund balance of forty-one thousand sixty-nine and five cents, so recommending to the nearest thousand dollars or forty-one thousand dollar assessment. Uh, on County Ditch Five next year.
Do they know that the bu- that the buffer strip payments are coming?
Uh, I don't know, I mean, that was at the public hearings that we've had at Henry's and here to. To accept the viewer's report, I mean, I think that was conveyed that they owe it, whether they recall that or not, um. This, this year, we become aware that we have, we need to get those paid, even though we don't have a repair petition or a repair project pending.
Michelle.
You also have the option to pull some of these items, like these bigger items and hold a separate hearing. Um, so that people have better notice, kinda like we've done with repair projects. Um, you can also chop these up so that we're not assessing the entire forty-one thousand. Um, this year, that would be an option as well. But, uh, for some of these things that aren't just, you know, looking forward at maintenance costs. We might wanna treat those differently.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, just because they're higher price from the forty-one to the ten, there might be more acres to assess.
Well.
You know what I mean?
Well, C D five is bigger than three.
Yeah.
It's not that big either, it's not really that big. C D five is.
And but C D five has got buffer strips that are gonna be paid out. That's where our biggest fund is coming from, we gotta pay out them buffer strips.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, Michelle's, you know, you don't have to do all that.
Right up front.
Up front, if you, if you're more comfortable with a lower amount, at least we're starting to collect some maintenance.
Well, if, if I look at it as a landowner, you're gonna take it out of my right pocket and put it in my left pocket.
For some of them, yeah, where the ditch actually lies. Um, it, the way it would work out is, they would receive more buffer than what they paid, um, in assessment. Because your, your. Buffer strip payments are a cost of the whole system, you get all these benefited landowners, but only some landowners where the ditch actually lies.
That they get buffer strip payments, yeah.
Thoughts on the, sorry.
Add to that as well, the other thing is that this may be more appropriate to do a multi-year assessment with interest charged. And drainage lien, tabular lien, so, that might be why you might not want to do it as just this one year animal assessment.
But then does that, or does that make any more work for the Audit or Treasurers Office?
It does, it does, yeah.
That's what I thought.
But it, it depends on how you wanna charge.
She does have elections, you know.
Yep, I just wanna make you aware of your options because some of these may be very costly for the landlord.
Yeah.
May I bounce off of that, that the sooner this is approved, the sooner we can get, because we have until the end of November to get it onto the assessment.
Oh, yeah.
So, if we, the November's not a good.
Sure, to Michelle's point, though, the big, this big forty-one thousand, Chris, do you have the spreadsheet on C D five to show us what these people are potentially looking at?
I sure, certainly do.
I mean.
Uh, where's my scroll bar? So some of the bigger ones, uh, here's, you know, fourteen hundred dollars, there's a fifteen hundred dollar one. Yeah, here's a forty-four hundred dollars or sixty-six hundred dollar one. So.
Do those big ones happen to have buffer payments coming back, though?
Um.
I hope so.
Some of them do, I would say, yeah, um. I do, I don't remember, but I do recall looking at this when I was looking at the buffer strips owed, that some of these that. Have some of the bigger ones do get buffer strip payments back, but.
But if we don't do it all at once, we're relying on the general fund to fund this.
Right.
If we split it up for two or three years. On, then all the county taxpayers are.
Well, we're getting interest.
I, I know. I can't.
Assess somebody's fifteen hundred bucks, sixteen hundred bucks.
So, at least it started, we could do something less than that. I do believe we have an obligation to get those buffer strip payments made.
That's the majority of it, it's like thirty-three grand.
Right, yeah.
That's right, yeah, mm-hmm, and we'll just collect a maintenance assessment and, and. Adjust each year at this meeting, uh, accordingly, so.
So, do we sacrifice our general fund to take the pressure off these landowners for the next few years, I mean.
I think.
The end of the day, it's the county who.
That's the problem, Monty's brought it up many times, I mean, we're, we could go backwards on these ditches real quick.
Oh, yeah.
How long are we spreading this out over for them to repay it?
Seven years on a, on a repair.
On the repair itself. Yeah, repair, yeah. For a maintenance assessment, it'll be one year, for one year, we create this spreadsheet and that's what they'd be expected to pay.
If we split this up, we're putting more math on the Audit or Treasurers Office, too. Is it appropriate to, are you, when you say, split it up, two years, three years, four years? Thoughts?
It was your ditch, Michelle Hall, but you wanna pay it.
Good guy, I'll never have a ditch.
That's what some of them, some of us up here are saying.
Thoughts on splitting it?
We could split it and do half this year and half next year, but we still gotta get in front of the boss.
Right.
Right now, we're under.
Right.
Right.
I mean, at, at some point, they're gonna have to, I mean, I hate to say it, eh, pony up, I mean, it's. This is something that has been pushed down the road for years and. We, we, we got the tough job of telling people it's gonna cost money.
If we split this up, I assume we have the choice of no interest on it, we don't have to charge interest on it, do we?
I would. I probably would, because it's interest we could have collected if the money was.
Yeah.
In our account.
Invested.
Approximating what we were earning.
Right.
Right.
So you.
Little bit less.
So what would that number be, I'm sorry?
Right.
Five percent?
Right now, we're, yeah, we're at about five point three. And then if you do that, then we're gonna have to mail out the letter saying you have until X date to pay it without interest. And then calculate in the ones.
You mail a letters out to tell them, either way, you mail a letter out to tell them they gotta pay it, or they gotta pay it, they can pay it over three years with five percent interest. Not gonna have every campus.
If, if these larger settings were cut in half, does that give the board a little bit more comfort, if we just say, okay? Regardless of the fund balance, we wanna start collecting a maintenance assessment and the, and for twenty twenty-five on County Ditch Five, we wanna do twenty thousand dollars. And that's a one-time assessment, and the next year we'll come back and we'll look at it and maybe we say, yeah, we need another twenty thousand dollars, cause we paid out thirty-three thousand of. Buffer strips this past year, but. I just, that, that's the simplest, eh, in statute, trying to understand, you know. Michelle and reading statute and Christine's position, the simplest would be to say, we're just doing a maintenance assessment of twenty thousand dollars, there's no.
Yeah.
Auditor's lien required, but then there's no interest collected, but you collect that whole amount in one year.
Oh, yeah, you're just. I don't, it's a double inch sort, no matter how you look at this.
I guess I, on all of these, I wasn't prepared to adopt these today, so, I mean, that's where I'm frustrated right now.
I'm inclined to split it in two and not charge them interest, and I realize that the general fund could have earned it, but at some point. The county, not us, or not even the last board, but the county's dropped the ball on this.
There you go, that's the true, and the county may have to pay the price a little bit, huh?
I, and I don't like it, but, boy. You send them that and then just say, by the way, you owe us five percent on it, too.
Well, the easiest thing to do then, as, as we're having these conversations, is, Chris, just to split it. You know, not that I wanna personally do it, but I also don't want these people coming back that have a seventeen hundred dollar or whatever.
Yeah.
Some of these are sixes, six hundred.
Grand or whatever, you know.
It's not gonna be fun.
It's not gonna be fun, but if you split twenty thousand this year and assess twenty thousand next year, or see where we have to be next year, at least we're. We're showing and we're trying to make this work.
What about the interest, that's gonna be the next question, if you do it two years.
Or less, I'd say we can forego the interest, if we do it more than two years, we gotta have interest. And my thoughts.
Michelle.
If you just certify twenty thousand this year and you don't address. Twenty thou- the other twenty thousand and you choose to address it next year, then you're not doing a multi-year assessment, does that make sense?
Yep.
So it's just twenty grand that you're certifying this year.
Right, got it.
So then you don't have to have that conversation regarding the interest.
Okay, I can live with that.
Next year, we do another twenty grand.
Yep.
Just as long as people know.
Okay, so what do you wanna do on C D five, then, you've heard?
All C D five, I make motion to C D five that we split it that.
Nope.
Twenty thousand.
We just assess twenty thousand.
Yep, only a twenty thousand.
We'll assess twenty thousand for twenty twenty-five.
Second. Okay, motion second to assess twenty thousand in twenty twenty-five on C D number five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, C D six.
C D six is, that's an easy one, because this is just assessments or just maintenance, right?
Yeah, so we already have those pending assessments.
Where we should be, somewhere.
So, I'm anticipating, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars of mowing costs and maybe some inspection costs out there, too, so that's why I was recommending the maintenance assessment. Would be seventy-five hundred dollars.
Motion to, uh, assess seventy-five hundred and six.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, move on to C D seven.
Seven, this one's another large one, though, because we have, uh, sixty-one, almost sixty-two thousand dollars of buffer strip payments that are, that are owed. According to the redetermination of benefits.
So all, none of these buffer strip payments went out?
We haven't done a repair on them, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think part of the thought was like, okay, we'll be having upcoming repairs, but here we are. We're already three years out since we've done the redetermination of benefits, and I think we've learned. That we don't wanna sit on those buffer payments, cause too many things can change and, and stuff, so.
Okay.
Well, that's where I was going, like, so since we haven't done a repair. Can we just table them for another year till we get, maybe we'll have a repair on them?
Could, but we do have to make those payments.
We have to make the payments.
Yeah.
Like sooner than later?
Even without a repair?
Yes, because they're owed that money, so you can do a redetermination without a repair, and we've determined damages.
Well, then.
You thinking of splitting it?
I don't know, I'm looking at the one down, the next one down.
We're on seven, so, control yourself, Chris, do you have sevens pulled up now?
Um, yeah, so seven.
Go over to the right.
Um, here, okay, here's seven, I didn't get enough time to go through and like combine, cause some of these are multiple. Um, cause they're forty acre tracks, but same owners, but, um. Like, here's a seventeen hundred dollar one just for this parcel receiving benefits, there's, this is at sixty-nine thousand, here's a twenty-one hundred dollar assessment.
I'd like to know how many of these are getting a payment.
So.
I would bet most of them are getting a payment because they're the highest assessed, it's.
Not really, cause you gotta realize that the benefited acres grow as we redetermine them.
To Commissioner Kupinski's point, though, I think those that are receiving the most benefit are the ones that are closer.
Right on the ditch.
To the ditch, so, um, so they have, therefore they have the largest benefit, largest assessment. But, yeah, they're getting some of the buffer strip pains.
So do you think, Chris, that there'll be a very few that have a large assessment that won't get it, will have to pay?
Yeah, I ca- um.
Well, what I could see happening is somebody's gotta, gonna, gonna get assessed two thousand dollars. We split the baby right now and say, we're gonna, we're gonna assess you a thousand dollars this year. They get a two thousand dollar payment this year, and then you come back to them and assess them another thousand next year and go, whoa, what the heck, why didn't you just keep my two thousand?
We're not doing that. That gets too muddy.
I know, I, I get that, but.
So your point is, assess the sixty-nine thousand.
I, I hate it, but, I mean. Yeah, then split all of them, then, then I think we should go through and.
Well, I was just gonna say that, because.
And I wanted to maybe point out, okay, so, similarly to, uh, ditch six or ditch five, I said. Um, this has twenty-four hundred benefited acres, it is twice, um, what ditch five was, they only had eleven hundred acres. So, if you follow your kinda train of thought, if you split it over, cut it in half and we're just gonna assess, you know.
Thirty-five grand.
Thirty-five grand this year.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a similar amount of assessment.
Yeah.
Because of the number of benefited acres.
I say we split them all and.
Live with that?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, is your motion?
To split.
For thirty-five grand for C D seven.
Oh, we gotta do each one individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second, uh, for the maintenance assessment of thirty-five thousand dollars on C D seven for twenty twenty-five, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. C D ten probably up next.
This is a big one, um, and this is one maybe we wanna separate these, these out, um. Current fund balance of a negative one hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars ninety-four cents. Uh, that's for the redetermination of benefits process, and since we already started working on the repair report, um. The engineering cost, uh, to date, um. Uh, we have thirty-three thousand dollars of buffer strip payments that are owed, because this is, this is like a seven mile long ditch, so a lot of buffer strip payments. Are owed, so, uh, my line of thought was rounding it to the nearest thousand dollar to make it whole in one year, that comes to a hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. But that's a large assessment.
Go ahead, Michelle.
This is part of a repair petition, so those engineering costs are part of that repair project. It may make sense to address all the repair costs when we have the final numbers. And then assess that in a multi-year assessment like we've done with the rest of them.
Yep.
So kind of separate out. What is currently owing for the buffer strip and redetermination and keep those costs regarding the repair separate and distinct.
So in this case, we'd be looking at thirty-three thousand dollars of buffer payments that we could assess. And, and keep the rest of it in a repair.
And once that repair is finalized, then we assess it.
Like we've done, yep.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Motion to assess the thirty-three thousand.
Okay, on C D ten?
Yep.
Your second?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Chris, you good with that, makes sense?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was trying to scroll down to see the total, there's a lot more benefited acres, so.
Sure.
I, um, yeah, there's twelve thousand eight hundred benefited acres, so once you apportion that out, I think the assessments are gonna be really small.
Yep.
And I think that's a good idea, then. And I think that's a good idea, then then they get used to the idea of being assessed, knowing that.
That keeps it clean, very good point, right, okay.
The part, the hard part is when we get the repair completed, that assessment's gonna jump quite a bit.
Yep, well, and the other hard part's gonna be is if we find out that our repair is costing more than the benefit, then we're gonna have to turn around and assess them for those costs anyways, even though it's not gonna get repaired.
We're gonna, we're gonna keep that repair under.
Okay, good, right, so any other discussion on CD ten, assess thirty three thousand? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, CD eleven.
CD eleven, immediately downstream of CD ten, uh, don't have a repair petition. Uh, but quite a bit of buffer strip payments is owed on that one as well, um, fifty thousand or so. I was recommending seventy two thousand dollar assessment, but that's, once again, that's a large assessment if you wanna do something.
I think we treat eleven like we did ten.
Yep.
What, uh, just, do you have their?
Fifty one thousand.
Yeah, their, um, benefited acres.
Oh, I skipped CD ten to CD twelve, I do not, so, but, um.
What do you wanna do? I, that's a fairly large system too, isn't it?
Uh, it is, yeah, mm-hmm, so, cause it has multiple branches on it as well, so, um, a lot of benefited acres, so.
Do we leave it at the seventy two?
Well, but if we're gonna follow because we don't have a.
Repair petition.
Repair on it.
Well, we should, then we split it and we do.
But with ten, we just did the buffer strips.
Buffer strip to make it easier.
But do we got a repair petition on eleven?
No.
So we wouldn't have anything coming for that, so we'd have to take and split that seventy two now.
Oh, you're saying because ten had a repair petition?
Correct.
Okay, so split the seventy two.
Split the seventy two.
Thirty six grand.
Motion.
Eleven, okay.
Second.
Motion second, assessment for thirty six thousand, which is splitting. Proposal, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, and CD twelve, that has a repair petition on it.
So we have a repair petition and if, uh, going with Michelle's recommendation, we're working on that. I anticipate probably another fifty thousand dollars in twenty five of engineering costs to final that e- engineering report. That's where I got to an assessment of ninety thousand, but maybe we separate those and just go back to the buffer.
Yep, separate them again.
Yep.
I moved to pay the twenty five thousand.
Okay.
Second.
Motion for twenty five thousand on, on CD twelve. Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, we wanna make sure we get really good notes about what we did here and why.
Christine has taken.
Hey, I kept them.
Wash your hand, so we will prepare in order, um, like this that has all these ditch systems labeled and we'll bring it back for, uh, ratification at the next.
September third meeting, okay, thank you. Anything else, Michelle? Chris, um, any other updates?
Um.
Heard from Houston yet on CD fourteen.
Got, I did not get the report from them last week, I anticipated, got an email late last night that should be getting something today. If you can email me, I don't, so hopefully in the next day or two, I get a repair or a updated report on how to address those wetlands and then we need to schedule a meeting with the TEP again to prove to them that we can do some things and not drain that wet.
Would it be safe to say we won't be talking about September third either, because you've got a scheduled TEP too?
That's right, yeah, I doubt we can get a TEP meeting scheduled for then.
Okay, anything else?